Board of Education meeting. Who called?
Anderson.
Here.
Pat.
Here.
Stuckey. Colajay.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3 is the approval of November 17th, 2021's meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Item 1.2, the action this evening. Got a motion, please.
Seven.
Second.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Okay. Item 1.3, approval of November 17th's meeting minutes.
So moved.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Item 1.4 is the approval of our December 1st, 2021 special meeting minutes. Got a motion, please.
So moved.
Very good.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat. And Colajay.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Okay. Item 2.1, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Marshall for OSBA media honorable representatives.
Board President, members of the board, thank you for letting me present this evening. So for the past 20 years, the Ohio School Boards Association recognizes members of the this community, members from newspaper, TV, radio, print. So districts all across the state of Ohio select a media representative that they have worked with throughout the past year as far as developing stories and working with the district that have created a fair, balanced, and accurate presentation of stories across the district. So this evening, here to present the award for this, we had this here, but we nominated Cassie Arsenal with Channel 12 WKRT, WKRT TV.
You got it.
Choking up. No, we nominated Cassie. Her work over the past year as far as presenting stories for the district has just been announced in the evening. Cassie first started, at least directly from her own, we did a story on the health and wellness, mental health department here in the district. And then from there, Cassie had done stories for the yearbook, staff, teacher shortages, arts food service. But the one that really stood out was a story that was done on Ms. McCandless. Ms. McCandless was a former teacher here in the district. We donated her entire estate here. And that story really stood out, at least for me, as far as opening up to the community so that we could collect information about Ms. McCandless, who she was. When we received that donation, we had very little details about who Ms. McCandless was and why she donated. So working with Cassie, which is great, she presented a very good story. The feature story was done exceptionally well, and it really helped us to gain a lot of knowledge, hearing from Ms. McCandless's friends, previous students, and the colleagues that she had worked with, even all the way out in Texas. So it was just great, the reach that that story had. So to me, there was no better option than to nominate someone for this award. So again, Cassie, thank you. I'd like to present you with this here.
Sure. I just want to say one thing about springbrot schools, because I've worked in five different stings now for journalism, and I've worked in countless school districts, and I have to say, this is my favorite one. It is apparent that you guys really care about the kids, not only their education, but their mental wellness and how they're doing in life. And I've never done stories on a school district that's like a family. I know people kind of throw that around, but you definitely have that here. And I also, I don't mean to like go back and forth, because I know you just said a lot of nice things about me, but Scott is wonderful. He makes it easy not only to pitch, he pitches amazing ideas for the school, which is important, but he's always down when I have a good idea, like the yearbook story, you are ready to jump in and find whoever you could do it. And lastly, which I think is most important, is you guys are always open and transparent to answering the hard questions, which are not always the easy ones, but you're always very transparent in school district. And I have to say, not all school districts are like that, so we really appreciate it. So thank you for just letting me be a part of your community, and I really, really love doing stories with you guys, so thank you.
Cassie's given a plaque here, a certificate for, and then part of this, so this is the OSBA's journal that they put out, and then they list their entire media honor for the backs of her name printed here in the latest issue.
Thank you, guys. It's an honor. Thank you so much. Yeah, and I brought my mom and dad, because I was so excited, so.
My wife doesn't let me do this very often.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. One, two, three.
Thank you, guys, again.
Congratulations. We are going to move to item 2.2, the Springbrot Education Association Report, which hopefully we have invited this evening. Item 2.3 is our Springbrot Classified Employees Association. We have no one here to report out on that. We have no pre-arranged public speakers this evening. And item 2.5, public participation on any of the business items this evening. Okay. We'll move into our work session. Item 3.1 is public participation on work session items only, so this is section 3. Anyone in this evening on work sessions? Okay. We'll move to item 3.2, support. This is, we'll refresh it. This is the salary modification for an op supervisor commission from the curriculum.
Mr. Board President, Board Members, this evening, what we're going to do is bring to you a request for a revised salary schedule for the position of op supervisor, operations supervisor. That position was approved by the board in February of 2020. It is a needed position within the district, and after we did some benchmarking of some other districts and looking at the salaries that were being presented for this type of position, after we're speaking with Tara and also Ms. Hester, we decided that, you know, we probably needed to revise the salary schedule for this particular position. This position will certainly assist the district in a lot of the day-to-day operations and functionalities of operations within the district from the standpoint of custodial, maintenance, and other needs throughout the district, from project management, and also looking at our preventive maintenance programming, our energy conservation program, and also looking at our work order system and making sure that we're very active with staff, and also working on training with our custodial staff. It will also assist me tremendously in being able, in my position, to be able to better focus on things that we passed the PI levy for, which is continual improvements within the district from an infrastructure perspective and also from a grounds and facilities perspective. Some of that does take quite a bit of time when you're investigating and looking at options, when you're working on pricing mechanics, and also when you're also looking at just the overall layout of the district, and also a strategic plan. So each of those things do take quite a bit of time, and being able to divest that time into that versus doing the day-to-day things would really be an advantage, I think, to the district as a whole. So with that, questions?
So we've added on it in 2020, because you've got the fiscal year 21, '22 here, and step zero was 35, '28. What was it in fiscal year 2021? What was step zero?
I don't know if Tara has that information possibly for us.
Okay. When we first approved it, the starting pay was $20.28 an hour. So it's going from 42,000 at step zero to 67,000 max, to now the salary schedule's going from 73 to 98. And I think the position's also warped from what was originally asked when the position was added back in February of 20. It was the position that was being brought forward at that time, the duties were very different. So it's, the position's warped, so that's why getting somebody to do the position that it's been changed to still falls under operations supervisor, but the person's going to be doing different things. Then when we started looking at the salary range of those types of duties, we're not going to be able to get anybody for the salary that we had had previously.
So do we have somebody in this position right now?
We've never filled it.
We do not.
So we approved it, but we didn't hire for it?
Correct.
Was it because we couldn't find somebody at that rate?
A combination. When you look at 42, this person would be making significantly less than all of the people that he or she is going to be over, is one thing. But then COVID hit, and we just pressed pause and said, we're not going to fill at this time.
Okay.
And then we wanted Mr. Gilbert to get in and to really understand our needs, and he has, to see if this position is necessary.
So Tara, remind me, when we had an open position that we approved, did we carry that budget, and then we just take the favorability until we actually hired for it?
Yes.
And this is, at least the base piece is not incremental?
Exactly.
It's just the change is incremental?
Like the additional 20 or whatever, like whatever it's like.
Thirty-five.
You said, when you looked at this relative sort of similar position in other districts, this puts us sort of middle-ish?
Yeah, it's middle-ish. We're always a little bit middle, well, but it's still.
I assume, Ms. Marshall, you just.
Yeah. It gives us a competitive model.
Yes.
Yeah. So, and it's a very competitive marketplace right now. So, yeah. So. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Item 3.3, Mr. Hook, Athletic Applicatress.
Yes, I'll go in for Mr. Rose. Just a couple of additional ones. These are the annual trips, one of the girls' basketball program that goes to Indianapolis over the holidays. They have a tournament there they've been doing for a while, as well as a wrestling tournament that's in Indiana as well. Again, just vertically missed the other day, and then I talked with Austin, just missed it. So something, it was on the schedule and wasn't permitted, but I just wanted to bring those up. Those are still in front of us, yeah.
Item 3.4, this is our, again, 2022 board meeting minutes. This is our board calendar.
It does miss all of the Career Center. Good.
Can you actually have, actually send an invite out to all of us?
Probably after the RBA.
Yeah, I think the one thing I noticed, sorry about the story, I think we're only at the beginning of July.
I think we keep two, just in case. And we usually don't cancel one, I swear.
If you, and you'll notice, we, you know, the 27th of June, which that's really to help us close fiscal account, then she's got to turn right around and get documents to the auditorium.
I was going to ask you guys about that one, because I know that Carrie and Larry both will be out for that meeting, and they'll truly will only be my final head-on reports. So we could always make that a morning meeting if that was easier for you. It will literally take five minutes, but it's up to you if you don't want to have it every six hours.
Yeah, that's fine. Does it help you to do it later than the 27th?
Um, I have, I mean, I could do it the 27th, 28th. I only need an hour to get a submit to the county auditor. It just has to be submitted by the 30th.
Yep, okay. So let's just, I would suggest we just keep it as is. I know we can get all of it.
Okay.
All of that, I think.
Oh, it's pretty consistent.
Yeah, consistent this year. Okay. Very good. Okay. Let's see, item 3.5, this is just the organizational meeting for 2023, which is January 11th. Okay, moving on to item 3.6, this is committee reports, and we have two committee reports this evening. Safety Committee, Mr. Hoover, and Curriculum Council.
Thanks, Nicky. The Safety Committee did meet yesterday. We had a very good meeting, very productive meeting, had a very good attendance. One of the things that was discussed, without revealing too many things that we do within the district from a safety protocol to protect our students and staff, is that Officer Nicely did provide a good summary of the district and the many drills that we are required to do, and how those have gone through the year, and her appreciation for our students and staff, you know, for their focus and attention when these drills are conducted, because, you know, certainly very important in today's environment. We all know that we don't want to be doing them, but we have to do them in order to continue to make security and safety part of our regimen, you know, throughout the school day. So she was very complimentary of everyone during that time. Officer Don then updated the committee about an October Professional Development Day that we had, and during that October Professional Development Day, he met with several administrators and also some other staff members, and they talked about our emergency operations plan, things within the plan, and then also went through a few different scenarios with those individuals to make sure that we were up to date, make sure that we all understood, and there's a lot of what ifs that can happen. And so they went through many of those as well, and felt that it was very good conversation. So those are very important as well for continual development. So the last thing I'd like to add, which is a little bit part of the Safety Committee, but happened today, and I'd like to thank the city, the township, and our staff here in this district for, and commend them for the great job they did in preparing the schools for this morning. No one predicted or expected what was going to come about last night, and we got a little more than we expected, but they did a great job in getting us prepared and ready, and that is part of safety and security as well. And so I want to thank them for the hard work that they did. That is usually the comments that we get. So, all right. Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to add that I thought was super interesting is, you know, we've talked about in looking at the safety of our children, if we could, what it would cost to update our camera system. And it was really interesting to me, he's looking at different systems right now, and the one that, when he brought the administrative team in, they were talking about what would take 30 minutes to watch, to review something, it would now take three to five minutes. And so I think not only is it better safety for our kids, but it also, when you look at staff time and what we are paying our staff to do, I just think there's a double advantage there, because we're going to be able to keep our kids safer, and we're going to be able to have better, a better use of our staff time, because it just feels, I mean, hearing them talk about the amount of time that they take, because they're committed to getting to the right answer. So I just, I'm, I know that the cameras are expensive, but when you, when you hear them, there was a lot of, I think, almost every building has an administrator there, and you hear them talk about the amount of time that they spend on that, I just hear this is an important thing, and I know you said that you've requested grants for every building, and we would get them, but it'd be great. But I think that that's an important thing for us to invest in for our own safety and for our administrative team to be able to do their job correctly.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you.
Curriculum Council met on December 2nd. We talked about our next steps in strategic planning for our staff, and we talked about the interactive boards that you so kindly approved for our classrooms. We also discussed purchasing, funding, supply chain items for our classroom, new literacy practices, response to intervention, where we are with elementary science, we're looking at different programs this year. Also professional development, we have a, as we have a professional development day that's being planned currently out for February 7th, we have over 65 presenters set up at this point, with more to come. Student growth measures in English Language Arts classrooms in grades six through eight and workplace learning. We also had reports from administrators at all six buildings.
Thank you. Okay, that's our committee reports. Section 3.7, any other business?
All right. Item 5.1, approval of the financials in November. The detailed financials reports are on Word docs, available for your review. Just a couple highlights, we received over 3.2 million in revenue for the month of November. Of that, 2 million was our rollback in Homestead. I had mentioned back in our November meeting that we typically receive it in October. It was a little bit late this year. We did get it in mid-November. The other 1.2 million was our state funding. They're going to be starting our new state funding formula that will be by end of January sometime, so we're still kind of being funded on our old funding formula, and so we'll catch up, and you'll see larger amounts coming forward starting in January. Our expenses through November are actually running right on target. We're within $1,000 in payroll, so we're actually really, really close. We did have a debt payment that we paid in November for students on the 1st for our COPS issue, so we had 4.6 million in expenditures. So we ended the month with about 12.4 million, which was about 77 and a half days of cash on hand. So we'll be pretty light in the month of January, so we'll start receiving taxes, including our PI tax events starting in February. And then item 4.2 will be the approval of the athletic booster group that I presented in November. It all seems to be well with that, for it to start on January 1. And then I have item 4.3, approval of a donation of $15,360 from the Springer Athletic Boosters to be used for the springboard athletic program, the details are listed on there. Item 4.4 is approval of a donation of $50 to be used towards the student meal balances, and the two donors are also listed on there, pretty easy.
And 4.5 is the approval of, it's 4.1 through 4.4. I have a motion.
So moved.
Anderson. Pat. And Colajay.
Yes.
Item 5.1 is approval of our athletic applicatress. This is where we just discussed. Got a motion, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Good.
Item 5.2 is our first reading of the revised, item 3.1, standup on public participation. This is incorporating the notes from our special working last week. The one thing you'll notice is that it's absent is the language on, what we've been looking at, discover a policy on superintendent meetings, and that's been a long, because that is not being viewed by Aaron, and it's not written part-time yet, so there's a little delay. Further updates for their week, I'm pretty sure. Rather. So item 5.2 is only the approval of 01691. This is first reading. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I guess any questions? Like I said, I think I've already had everything that we've discussed. I think it reminds the changes we've touched on. Yeah, I was. Okay. I have section 6, our assistance department, and we're going to start with the personnel report.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I present to you 6.1, the December Personnel Report, and item 6.2, the Athletic Report. You see that we did obtain a bus driver? Four. One. Just a little update on the Reach magazine effort that we did, in which 60,000 households, we probably got eight calls, and nobody was interested, so we are not going to rerun that again.
Okay, item 6.3 is the approval of item 6.1 and 6.2. Got a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Section 7, this is a, maybe this is ops.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yes, seeking approval for the items 7.1, 7.2, was discussed in Mr. Gilbert's presentation. I will say that 7.2 is the EPC must getting process. Will we do annual, like, so that we can pay full?
Just the present.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 7.3 is the approval of item 7.1, 7.2. Got a motion, please?
So moved.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Okay. Section 8, this is section.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In the agenda is a contract for a student placement at the transition learning classroom, the contract for that, seeking approval for the contract.
Okay. I have a motion to provide an A11.
So moved. Sorry.
Questions?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Section 7 is announcements future consideration. On the following ad, we are going to have an executive session, and we'll have any action afterwards. So, does that, so.
So I had two things. The first would be just a question, is there at any point just we do see the COVID numbers rising? Are we, as a district, going to look at that at all and consider a possible mask putting, you know, having a mask mandate again, or are we not looking at, is that not something we're considering?
Well, I'm really looking more at trends versus a particular spot in time, although I will say that yes, there has been enough there in cases. I do want to make sure people understand that the numbers from last week also included from Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving, including Thanksgiving in that following week. But with that said, we are trending almost exactly where we were last year at the same time. At that, at that point in time, we had no vaccination policy in place for in the country, as well as full masks, so, yes, we're going to continue to watch it. I watch it daily. I spent about an hour with the Health Department today. The good news is that we live in the best, best place. The good news is that we live in the best, best place in Warren County. We are the southwest Ohio's, got the highest vaccination rates of all age groups. And Warren County is even higher than anybody, so in the 5th and 11th grade age group, you know, we're 5% higher than the next county, southwest Ohio. 12 to 17 is 8%, then the 18 and 29% is 17%. So some of the message is getting through that vaccinations is important. We still encourage masking, we still encourage vaccination as the primary mode, so absolutely we'll watch your numbers and we'll continue to watch it. If we certainly see any anomalies, I'll address those. I do also want to make mention that, excuse me, which is part of the question, it's, is, deals with the number of kids that have gone into the mask, mask and stay. Right now, we've obviously had, that goes along with the uptick, we've had more people enter into that protocol. As of today, knock on wood, we still have had no children that have been exposed at school, at school, test positive and have come through the protocol. Really, we haven't had, right now, countywide, it's 97% do not, but we're trending better than that, so hopefully that will continue. So, talking again of the health department, it's, it's still pretty obvious that, that what's happening is infection rates, they're not happening, excuse me, is the bottom line, it's not becoming, doesn't mean it won't ever happen, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying right now the data doesn't share that, so it's still happening. The kids get away, you know, with families and what they're doing, so my advice to everybody is if you're concerned, I think you should, we certainly encourage masking, we certainly encourage, highly encourage vacci, vaccinating. Those are the best things you could do, or vaccinating is the best thing you could do, so we'll continue to watch it, but I'm, I'm looking more for trends than single shots, you know, changes, so it's, it's a process, but we've been looking at it hard for almost two years now, so it's kind of coming what you do.
I agree, looking for the trends. I think if we did continue to see it trending upward, though, even with vaccinations, we're seeing quite a few people get COVID, so if masks being additional, anything is something we need to continue to, to look at, which I appreciate you doing that. The other thing was, I recently heard about a teacher, and I just thought, what a unique and special thing from this teacher, as a teacher at 5th and 3rd grade teacher, and I don't know how to pronounce her name, Mrs. Amberby, Amberby?
Amberby.
She has a paper in her classroom, and she has 26 students, and it says 26 reasons Miss Amberby is thankful, and she lists every single student and something incredibly unique about every child. So it's the certain student's energy, another student's style, another student's love for a good book, another student's witty personality, and it is obvious she knows every one of these students. And I just thought, what an amazing, amazing teacher, and what it shows those kids that from August to November, the depth, and the parent that shared this with me, what she shared about this child's ability to have a conversation with anyone, and this child is like an adult. And so what she shared about him, because I happen to know him well, I'm like, what a neat thing for a teacher, and for those kids, they know the other kids in the classroom, so they know that that teacher knows that those students are that depth. So I don't, never met this teacher, but I just thought, wow, that just shows the quality, and that's just one example that I happen to have heard about, since my friend's a little kid's teacher, but it just made me sit back and reflect on the teachers that we have and the staff that are building into our kids, so I just wanted to share out what a neat thing it was that she's got in her classroom, so that was it.
And I love you just, thank you to those that donated toward the meal balances and boosters, obviously toward the athletic program, it's much appreciated, and just hope that as we wind down, first semester over the next week and a half, and everything goes well, and that everybody enjoys so much, needed, and well deserved time off with holidays.
Yep, that's, Jamie said it all, and we'll work towards the holidays, everybody have a great holiday, and appreciate everything that everybody does in the school system to make a difference with children.
Yeah, absolutely agree. Hope everyone enjoys some well deserved time off. I hope it's certainly safe and fun and enjoyable and come back and race to the end, race to June. With that, we will move to section 10, which is to consider the employment or compensation of the board or official, that's a motion to enter executive session, no action afterwards.
So moved.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ba, and Salache?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.